Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners Agenda Session for February the 7th, 2023. At this time, I will call on Commissioner Jones for the invocation and the pledge.
Everyone, please stand with me during these prayers. Father, we just thank you for waking us up today. We thank you for allowing us to serve here today. We ask that this meeting will be done in decency and order, and that we talk to each other with love and respect. We ask that you will give us the guidance and wisdoms to make decisions that we do not take lightly. But we ask that when we go out into the community, that we will be a beacon of light and love in your name's sake. We ask that when we leave, that you will give us the protection and guidance to protect us, our families, friends, and our community. And in this meeting, Lord Jesus, we ask that we all will clear our minds and hearts so that traditional ideas, as well as modern ideas, will unite together. For we know that unit- uniteness and not division is what causes positive change. In this we ask, in your name, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
And will you all please join me for the Pledge of Allegations? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
If we could all settle down. Madam Manager, any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chairwoman, we need to add a closed session for attorney-client privilege and for economic development.
Okay, and I will also ask to remove item 2B from the agenda. If I can get a motion, please.
N2E.
I'm sorry, N3E, please.
3E.
3E and 2B. If I could get a motion with those removals, please.
Submove, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Now, we will, Ms. Spim, approve it appropriately second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you. We will now move on to our presentations. Madam Manager.
Our broker with USI will share an update on the 23 fiscal year, 23 claims and recommendations for fiscal year 24 for our health insurance. General Manager for Financial Services, Vicki Evans, will introduce the presenter.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairwoman and Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Today, we have Kevin Quinn and Ed Boardman from USI to present this item. This is for the fiscal year 2024 Plan Renewal. We do ask for your feedback during and after the presentation because these two gentlemen will be back in March to finalize the recommendation and carry forward with what your intent is for the 2024 plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vicki, and I thank the board for having us today. We will be back in March, so this is a preliminary review of the benefit plan effective July 1, 2023. We do, are looking for the board's input on some important items. So, there we go. So, we wanted to provide you a financial overview of the current state of the plan, and these numbers are through November 30th of 2022. We are looking, last year at this time, if you remember, we had a very high spike in claims. This year, we're pleased to report that claims are about 12% down from last year, and our total net costs are running right at projected of where we projected for last year. So, things smoothed out nicely, and I have an exhibit to show you that, but we'll explain that. The enrollment slightly decreased by 1.3%, nothing terribly major. And then, when we look at the clinical, we do this every year, for, I see some familiar faces here, so you probably know a lot of this information, but our large claims that are, any claim over $100,000 are 26% of our total cost. In last year at this time, they were 42% of our total cost, so we are, that kind of turned around nicely. Unfortunately, cancers are a large percent of those costs, and we mention this every year, that the pre-65 retiree group, those are between 55 and 65, although it's 16% of the population, it represents 55% of the large claimants. It is what it is. Unfortunately, we don't have a special product like we had for the retirees to save the counties some significant costs. We just want to bring it to your attention, and we monitor it closely. With that said, there is obesity claims, diabetes, and hypertension still remain a pretty significant part of the claims cost, and that's not unusual for many of counties. This is a busy claim. I don't, a report, I showed you last year, we tried to clean it up a little bit, but the good news is, this, we're running annualized where we were, where we ended last year. And this $19.9 million number here, last year, if you remember, that was like a 23 or 24 million projected number because the claims are so bad. But good news is, it flattened out, and our FIE cost, which stands for Fully Insured Equivalent Cost, that's what we budget this on, we project yourself-funded, so it's not an exact science. Good news is, we're right at projected, so there's no overfunding or underfunding of the program. Prescription drugs are running at 34% of the total cost, and our per employee per year claim number is just slightly over where it was last year, 10,790. I will draw your attention to the large claimants. Last year, 35 large claimants, and at the bottom here, this $4.2 million means that Blue Cross paid $4.2 million in large claims. So, we won on our insurance on that, when we pay for large claims. This year, we're watching them closely, but a very small amount into stop-loss this year, but we do know we have two large claims emerging. This exhibit, I just want to take a minute, and I think this tells a great story for everybody. If you notice these, remember when I was here, and these, this bar, the gray bars are the bars that are actually happened, the blue bars are what projected. Last year at this time, if you look at those first five months, four out of five of the gray bars were above the expected, which caused a concern. But the nice thing is, it flattened out very well, and then, as you can see here to date through November 30th, the bar, the projected bar, the actual bars are right in line. And we know in December and January that claims have come in as expected, so that's good news. And again, in January, we'll update a more, we'll do more specific information here for you. The large claimants, the large claimants are what I just mentioned. Unfortunately, the pre-65 retirees represent eight of the 13 large claimants here. Two of these claimants are significantly ongoing claims. One's expected to be $1 million, one's expected to be $600,000 next year. I'll get into that in just one second. So, before I flip the next slide, there is a couple of things I do want to mention to you. As you, I'm sure all know, that Aetna Health Plans, which is owned by CVS, won the North Carolina State Benefit Program in 2025. That's 750,000 members that are going to be moving from Blue Cross Blue Shield of North Carolina to the Aetna plan. This is early yet. We are monitoring this closely and working with Aetna's Governance Affairs Area to understand what the potential impact is, both to Blue Cross Blue Shield of North Carolina and to Aetna. If you have more members, you get, you usually get a better discount with regards to a claim. So, a claim dollar through a Blue Cross plan and a claim dollar through an Aetna plan, we're going to be monitoring closely to see what those discounts are going to be. It could have a potential impact on where you go or what you consider in 2025, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention. We also, since we've been involved and even prior to that, your employee contributions haven't changed. Now, that's a wonderful thing if you're an employee, I don't deny that, but we're not keeping pace. The plan is not keeping pace with healthcare trends, and we'll show you that in a minute, and we'll explain, we have a consideration for the board to ponder. And then, and finally, we are going to recommend, in the past, we've heard that the specialist co-pay has been an issue, and if it could be a $50 co-pay, that that's something that would be high employee satisfaction, and there's going to be a way that we're going to introduce that. So, those are the three things that we want you to think about as we go through the next few slides. Now, big picture item, just to get to the, we're going to be in more detail in March, but we're projecting a 12.8% increase. Primarily, there's two things that go on, healthcare trend dollars, a claim that's a dollar today is projected to be a $1.8, a $1.9 next year, and the second thing is, we have two large claims ongoing, that the insurance company are saying we have a $1 million risk on this one and $600,000 on that one. Those could come in, but they may resolve themselves, they do resolve themselves from time, but this is all baked into this calculation. We do know that the two months of December and January are favorable, so it'll bring this 12.8% down to about 10, 10.5% without doing anything. So, real quick with this, and then we have two more slides, and then I have Ed to ramp up a couple of slides. This is the benefit plan design. I just want to bring your attention to the specialist co-pay, it's 80% after deductible. So, if a person goes to a specialist, they got to satisfy their deductible, and then the co-insurance. And over the years, we said, hey, we know a lot of people have specialist co-pay. People go to the primary care doctor, they go to the specialist, and then they have a prescription drug. So, we're looking at adding a $50 co-pay here, but eliminating the HRA fund. The HRA fund gets underutilized, it doesn't have a very big impact, unfortunately, and where we have 15,000?
About 15,500 specialists.
15,500 specialist visits, where people would be paying $50 versus, how many?
189.
I wish I had that off the top of my head, I apologize. 189. So, if you think about the impact in employee satisfaction versus the trade-off, that's something we want to bring to your attention in more detail in March, okay? Now, here's a big one, contributions. We want your opinion on this, and we want your impact. 2010, 2011, your contributions were the same as they are today. They represented 12.3% of the total health expenditure. We haven't changed them. So, now, your contributions, if they don't change, unfortunately, healthcare costs go up, and you're at 6.7%. Not keep in place with inflation, healthcare inflation, which is different than regular inflation. So, we want you to consider, and we know this is a big deal, possibly increasing the non-wellness contribution, because that's what you base your contributions off of, of the 12.8%, as we did, you're getting 12.8% increase, have the employees sharing the 12.8% increase, and then, the difference for wellness is a $30 co-pay, or $30, I'm sorry, a month reduction in their contributions. So, we take, I'm sorry.
You're talking a little fast now, you got to slow me down just a tad bit.
This is your current non-wellness contribution, and if you do your wellness, good news, we subtract $30. Okay, so now, we're saying, propose a 12.8% increase, which is what you, we're projecting, and say, subtract $30 as well for you doing the wellness, and the impact monthly, this is monthly, $6.53 for an individual, up to $41 for a full family. That creates another $279,000, reduce your budget by that amount, okay? For your consideration, and we could, so, this is your homework when you go home, and next month, we'll, we'll talk to you all about it. So, with that said, those are very, very important things we wanted to talk about, and Ed's going to dive a little bit deeper in some of these, what this means.
All right, thanks, Kevin. Yeah, as Kevin, for the active medical plan and for the pre-65s, there's three changes that we wanted to propose for considerations for the board. Really, the first, as Kevin mentioned, is swapping out the, currently, the specialist co-pay, which is subject to deductible, and then choosing co-pay. The $50 co-pay is close to benchmarks when we looked at surrounding counties and cities, looking at their plans as well as USI's benchmarks. We found that that, that number is anywhere from $35 to about $50 on average, so that would be in line with what we see. Cost impact, again, is associated, really, is just the difference for the additional cost to the plan minus the actual co-pay. So, we know right now, people are paying the deductible upfront, you know, that would go away, and the specialist visit would be subject to that flat $50 co-pay in place of that. And again, that's the, the underlying total cost impact to the plan. As it relates to the HRA and eliminating that, that currently, as we mentioned, about 189 people, very underutilized, probably less than about 30% of the people that are eligible for reimbursements are actually submitting to get that, those dollars. So, that's where we felt like the impact to changing the specialist would be more beneficial and more in line with what other, you know, companies similar to you are actually providing for their employees for their coverage. And then, the last is really, as Kevin pointed out, the additional cost or impact, if you took the contributions from where they are and you increased them by the planned projected increase of the 279. And again, that's based on today's information. As we get two additional months of claims, we expect that number to come down. Some additional considerations that we wanted to propose were two related to the pharmacy, so the first one is really just related to, you may have, you see a lot of advertisements for drugs, and there's a lot of drugs that are out there that are very high cost but low impact, and one of the things that Blue Cross offers is called a net results formulary, and it really eliminates those drugs that have other drugs that are similar qualities but lower cost on the formulary. So, it doesn't take away choice, it just limits the number of drugs in that class. And that impact to the plan would be about $217,000, which, again, we're finding, as we look at our customers, looking at pharmacy being one of the highest cost drivers to trend, we find that, you know, making these kind of changes will help alleviate some of that, that increase. The other one is called, the second one right below it is called Flex Access, and really what that is, is it's a manufacturer coupon program. You may have heard that if you go for some of these high-cost specialty medications, Humira, a number that are out there, you'll note that the manufacturers offer coupons for the employees to take those medications. Well, what this program does, it actually helps employees with those drugs, so they can find where there are coupons available. The employees benefit as they pay a lower cost, and the, the plan's benefit is you actually get to some of that coupon dollars rather than employee just using on their own, and it doesn't even get run through the plan, it gets run through the plan, so a lower net cost to the county. The next one is population health, Levango. Again, Kevin had mentioned upfront some of the cost drivers. We wanted to be cognizant, certainly, you know, the people that are either prediabetic, overweight, or have diabetes or heart disease, Levango is a condition program that actually helps them manage. They engage the member to actually make sure they're taking their meds, they're seeing their doctor, and overall savings is projected. Employees that have a managed chronic condition versus non-managed is about $410,000 to the plan. And then, the last one is, Kevin had pointed out, some of the, what's happening in the market, we're currently looking at both Aetna, Cigna, and United Healthcare as it relates to the administrative costs as well as stop-loss, and then also, we will do more of a discount comparison. Kevin hit on it a little bit. The impact of Aetna hasn't been felt yet, but we do want to look at seeing what that cost might look like if you were using a different network versus using Blue Cross Blue Shield. So, that's really the, that last bullet. We'll have more information in our next update in March. Post-65 retirees, so Kevin had alluded to this, so we changed Amlin's, it's been, how many years now? Three years. Three years, and one of the options that's out there, you may have heard, especially during October, November, December, Medicare Advantage commercials. If you're watching cable television, you'll definitely see those come up. Medicare Advantage really replaces what you currently have today, which is Medicare Supplement, and what it offers is actually opportunity, and this is, excuse me, I'm jumping ahead a little bit, but this is your current plan, and we're projecting actually about a 5% increase for 2024. But the Medicare Advantage, which we decided, we're still in the process of gathering the information, but it offers really a way to improve the plan and save the county money. So, on, on the low end, the projection was 250,000, the high end was almost 2 million. So, it is something that we want to propose as future consideration. Again, next meeting, we'll have more of an update on those numbers. Dental renewal, we know that dental is employee-paid, but we wanted to show that really, looking at the, how things are running and the increase, it's Delta proposing a 4.03% increase, which is just a one-year rate. Again, from what we see based on the claim experience, as well as the trend in dental alone, that is, that's, that's in target with what we see with other customers similar to you. And again, this is a summary, and I won't repeat all these, but I think really everything that we talked about is listed there. And again, as we come back next meeting, we'll have more information on the update on the projection, as well as some of those outstanding items as it relates to potential considerations for this coming plan year.
Vicki, anything else to add, or want us anything else to add, or any questions to be asked?
I just have one question, Madam Chair. And so, if I make, I guess where I'm looking at the employee contribution versus the total plan, so for 2023, the projected was 6.70?
I'm sorry, the?
The employee contribution, before, the one with the graph.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
The current, currently at 6.70. And so, you asking us to move it to 13.5?
No, 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 we're, we're increasing.
This, this increase is, comes out to about this, this number, this 1997. Yeah, but I'm, and then the next page, it says assumes a 12% illustrative increase, contribution 13.5% for the employee, 86 for the employer, so am I missing something?
We wanted to show you what the trend is and what the, and what they're seeing in their, in their portfolio with other customers. We're not recommending that, well, let me say this, in order to get, so like, so the 2005, we were at 13.2% of total cost, now we're at 6.7%. In order to get to 13, we would basically have to double what employees are paying. No, we are not recommending that.
Okay, that's, I'm looking at the recommendation on that page right there, where it says medical plan contributions, so on page 10, what is that?
On the overall recommendations page, is there an X there?
No, it says estimated cost impact, negative 279, assumes a 12.8 illustrative.
And so, the, okay, so.
Contributions would be 12.8.
So, we use the 12.9% as an illustration, okay, sorry, 12.8, we use, because, because that was the cost that we were looking at based on November claims year-to-date. So, the amount that it gets increased, whether it's anything, could be a range of zero to whatever you want it to be. Knowing that to get to the industry standard, our rates would have to double.
To 13.5?
Yes.
Yeah, well, yeah, okay.
And so, it was completely an illustration, and also, we did, Kevin did not talk about that, but we did talk about it internally, is that this may be difficult, or it will be difficult for employees to embrace more money coming out of their check, at least until the class and comp study is completed. And so, if we were to increase rates, then having them be effective July 1st would probably not be ideal.
So, I would suggest on that page 10, because that doesn't say illustration, it says 2023, 24 recommendations aboard consideration, which would lead me to believe that you're recommending that. If that's not what, if this is just illustration, it shouldn't be aboard consideration, it should just be an illustration, and then the number should come back.
Okay.
I mean, when you do it like that, and the employees look at it, it's look like y'all recommending to us that we take this up to 13.
You're right. On the, so on the summary page where we recap, can you go to that page?
Yeah, we'll get to that page, they stopped at that page.
Okay. So, on, on the summary page, and I apologize for that, that's why we left that, that percentage amount blank.
Right. So, I think we should put, instead of putting that aboard consideration back there, it's just illustration to be determined or whatever.
Okay, we'll just.
You see what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
All my employees come and yelling at my commissioners, and y'all doubling my fee.
Are there any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
Any feedback about the co-pay, or whether that is something that's desired of the board?
And the co-pay is $50,000.
Or whether to move, yeah, whether to move that forward, because, so, so what the, what we would like to do is bring back the total projected cost for the fiscal year 24 plan at the March meeting, and so, we were hoping to get some, some feedback about the items that you would like to move forward, or cross it off the list, don't move it forward, that kind of thing, unless you want to make that decision at the March meeting and, and we go forward from there.
Commissioner Faircliff?
I just want to ask about that $50 co-pay, because what, what is it now? I see now that it goes to the 80/20.
It is deductible. There is no co-pay.
So, if I walk in there and hand the card to the specialist employee, what's the difference between, what, what's the difference, okay? I have to give them $50, and then, and then does it go 80/20 after that?
No, no, it's $50 until your out-of-pocket expenses would have been satisfied in any calendar year. So, right now, you, a specialist co-pay could be, a specialist visit can be $250 to $500, depending on the specialist. So, right now, if that was your first visit of the year, you have to pay that whole $250 or $500 out of your pocket. And so, now, what we're proposing, which is higher employee satisfaction, they only have to pay the $50 every time they see a specialist. So, often, people are going to the primary care doctor, specialist, and getting a prescription drug. That's kind of the three areas where you most utilize, those are the three things. So, this has become an issue for employee satisfaction, and as Ed pointed out, he had 15,000 specialist claims versus 184 HRA reimbursement claims. So, we think it's a, it's a cross, it's a revenue-neutral event that we hope is higher employee satisfaction.
Commissioner Jones?
I think you just answered my question, but is there any way in this figuration where the co-pay is getting like a little bit lower? If not, I know that's pretty much general rate, because you just answered one of the questions I was getting.
Yeah, and as Ed pointed out, in other counties in North Carolina and in the South that we have, we're on our book of business, that $50 was pretty much the norm, going down 40 means it will cost more money to, to the county. So, we can, we can run those numbers for next meeting. Yes, sir.
Commissioner Adams?
So, I guess my question would be, you're going to change the pharmacy drug form to exclude those higher costs, and I saw the number of employees that, that would impact. What's the cost on those employees? I see the savings would be $36,000, but what's the cost to those 2976 and two members?
They, they'll have the, a different drug that has the same chemical makeup that they would be using.
So, they'd still be able to get it, it's just?
Yes, it doesn't mean they're, drugs excluded.
Well, I'm just wondering whether they, okay, so it's not?
Oh, I'm sorry, they'd be paying their, their co-pay, their prescription drug co-pay.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out whether, if it goes to another drug, whether it costs them, and how much as opposed to the $36,000. That's what I'm just trying to figure out. That makes sense.
Okay, well, I, I don't have it off the top of my head, but we could dig in for the next meeting, get that specific.
Well, I mean, if it's going to cost them $50,000, and I'm only saving 30, that makes sense.
No, no, they, they, they would be excluded, they would have an alternative drug that they'd have to use. And that's common, unfortunately, in the, in the prescription drug world.
Yeah, if I can get that, I'm sorry.
It only applies if there is a, an alternative, correct?
Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Jones?
So what this would require is that the employee used the cheaper drug.
Generic, maybe.
Right. But only if there is an alternative. So if there's not an alternative, it's not excluding that drug from coverage.
Got you. Commissioner Jones?
That makes sense.
I'm interested in hearing more information. You said you're going to give us more data in regards to the medical and lost marketing when it comes to the very last subject on there?
Correct.
Okay, and you'll have that back for us in?
The next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
So I believe that's the direction we're going to go, to go back and get those numbers, and then we'll have it for the March meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Commissioner Adams?
What, okay. Is that enough direction for, in terms of what we, because you got these recommendations, so I guess the question is whether we need to move on these bullets to give some kind of idea to bring back in March, besides what that co-pay and what Commissioner Jones asked?
Okay, so it's my understanding that those are the ones that you want additional feedback on, and so we'll bring that back, and that's sufficient.
And move forward on the rest of them, okay.
That's sufficient.
Commissioner Faircloth?
Let's talk about wellness and non-wellness a minute. If an employee opts for wellness, what do they have to do to qualify?
So each year, we have a wellness fair where there are four different criteria that are used to determine whether an employee meets the wellness criteria. And I do not know those off the top of my head.
Blood pressure, blood glucose, waist circumference, and?
All the things we got.
The sugar one.
Sounds reasonable.
And so Commissioner Faircloth, in order to meet the plan requirements, we also have to offer an alternative. And so for employees who don't meet those four, three out of four measures, they have the option to be able to see the health coach at the wellness clinic over, I think, several times over the next six months, and then they can also qualify for the $30 per month discount.
Okay, I remember when we went to this, and how successful has that been? Is this widely used by employees?
Well, you can see 1,344 people do participate in the wellness out of the 1,800, so that's pretty good. And usually, over time, more people jump into it.
That doesn't sound good to me, but you say it's good because of what you compared to. Is that right?
How many people get their physicals every year? About 30, 40%. But this is good, but there's a whole wellness initiative that is?
The wellness program, it goes, the wellness program overall goes beyond just the annual wellness fair. And so Tammy Gillis, she's the department head over that program. They have running programs, different walking exercise programs. Yes, they do multiple incentives to get employees to participate, and so I think you would have to hear from her. She's very excited about it.
Can I keep this follow-up question, please? Okay, what I'm getting at here is, ever since we went to it, it's been a $30 incentive?
Yes, sir.
As far as the monthly savings on the employee out-of-pocket, the employee portion of health insurance. Is that enough of an incentive? Do we need, can we stretch that 1,300 nearer to that 1,800 by upping that, spiffing up that little dollar amount right there? I mean, it's $30, that goes back 10 years or more. So what about, what about if we increase that to $50?
Um, I believe employees would love that.
The goal is to get people help, okay?
Yes.
Well, this number that you want to increase higher, and maybe you keep that spread lower, but it's the non-wellness one, there's more, that's more wellness, we call it with a stick.
I understand, I understand. We're sticking it to the non-wellness thing, but can we get some more of them into the wellness category?
So we, maybe we need?
By offering a better incentive, that's what I'm asking.
No, you're right, and we can run some models with respect to that.
So Commissioner Faircloth, I think that what I've seen, and what I've talked with Tammy in the past, is there are some people who will not go and do that assessment because their employer is conducting the assessment. And so there's a level of employees who aren't going to go do that health screening. And so if you don't do the health screening, then you don't, you're not even eligible for the discount.
So if they don't do it for 30, they won't do it for 50.
Maybe, I can't say that, but.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Just trying to look after employees.
So we can, we can explore that more before the next meeting.
I just know it's been old.
It is, it's probably as old as these current rates. Yeah?
So 28 or 9?
Okay, okay. All right, we have our direction. Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Evans. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, see you, Ma'am.
Madam Manager, we will now move on to Presentation C.
So our Public Health Director, Dr. Jennifer Green, will provide an update on the recommendations for spending part of our first year of opioid funding.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I have a handout for you that I will pass out. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm going to take us back a little bit to last August, or really, in 2021, when Attorney General Josh Stein announced the $26 billion opioid settlement agreement, and that is bringing approximately $17 million to Cumberland County over an 18-year period. There's been a little bit of a revision to the dollar amount that we'll be receiving for Cumberland County that's been revised upwards in the last six months since we went to the Commissioners with our initial recommendation. So the total amount for our spring 2022 payment and our summer 2022 payment is now closer to, and you have it on the first page of your handout there, a little over $2 million. In addition, the county, as a result of the restructure of the bankruptcy, of the restructure of the bankruptcy organization of an opioid maker, has resulted in additional $110,000 for the county, and we've received that payment. And then in addition to that, there will be future opioid settlement dollars that are coming forth as a result of a lawsuit for five additional, against five additional companies, CVS, Walgreens, Walmart, Teva, and Allegra. And that's an additional $20 billion nationally, $20 billion nationally in funding, and that payout schedule is somewhere between six years and 14 years. We don't have the funding allocation or the timing of when those dollars are coming to Cumberland County yet, but we know they are forthcoming, and we've been in conversations with the County Commissioners Association about what to do in order to get prepared for those dollars. So the key there is that there are additional funding that's coming down the pipeline in the next couple of years that we'll know about, and once we have those dollar amounts, we'll share those with you. Back in August, the Commissioners approved several recommendations for the initial spring 2022 and the initial summer 2022 payments, and so I wanted to give an update about where we are in those recommendations, and then make some further recommendations regarding the RFP process that we pursued. So I'll start with the request for proposals process. So in August, the Commissioners approved us to move forward with the RFP process, up to $800,000, based on several strategies that are available in the MOA. And those were around treatment, early intervention, recovery support services, recovery housing, employment-related services, reentry, and criminal justice diversion programs. So we put together an RFP that went out in October, folks had about two months to reply to that, and then the review committee convened to review those applications, or those proposals. We put together a diverse panel of committee members to review those, including individuals that had lived experience with substance abuse. And that committee met last Thursday, which is why you have a handout and not a slide deck. So that review committee met last Thursday to make some recommendations. On the backside of that first page of your handout, so page two, you have the recommendations from that committee. These recommendations represent opportunities to do some short-term projects that can scale up very quickly. These are experienced providers in our community, and experienced agencies in our community that are very knowledgeable and have a wealth of experience providing services in these areas. This also leaves money on the table to provide some bigger projects down the line that the Commissioners, that we talked about with the Commissioners in August, and I'll jump back to those in a minute. So the four recommendations, the committee recommended funding for agencies. The first is Carolina Treatment Center, funding recommendation of $220,000 for them to help support recovery, support services, housing, employment-related services, and reentry programs. And those programs will work in tandem with their provision of services that they already provide to provide treatment for opioid use disorder. The second funding recommendation from the committee is to support Myoverre Fellowship Homes for recovery, support services, housing, for the, in the amount of $200,000. And these are over, these are two-year projects, right? So we wanted to do multi-year projects to give people time to build capacity. We know they can scale it quickly, but one-year projects are really hard to implement because you don't have that sustainability piece. The third agency was North Carolina Harm Reduction to provide those support services, support their criminal justice diversion program, they cooperate with the Fayetteville Police Department on the LEAD program, and then also support reentry. That funding amount is $199,990. And then the last recommendation from the committee was for Fayetteville Family Drug Treatment Court in the amount of $80,000. That project, we would like to fund, but only with condition. There was some clarification that was needed regarding who the funding, who would receive the dollars, and in addition, on the performance metrics, on what are the outcomes that they're proposing, and then also assuring, on the financial side of reporting, to assure the funds are being used for opioid use disorder. These are dollars that, while important, can't be used for alcohol or other substance abuse, it has to be directed towards opioid use. And so we wanted to make sure that that funding, that we would be able to support that project, that get some structure in place to be able to carry out that program effectively. And so the total dollar amount there is $699,990. And that last funding option was for Fayetteville Family Drug Treatment Court. If they were, if they're successful in year one, the committee would like to come back and say, okay, they were successful in year one, we'd like to fund them with those conditions, fund them a second year, and if they were funded a second year, that total proposal would be, the total funding amount across all four of those projects would be just under the dollar amount that you all recommended, at $799,990. So I will pause there before I give updates about the other recommendations that the Commissioners talked about in August.
Are there any questions, Commissioner Jones?
First of all, Dr. Green, I want to commend you for an excellent report, but I do have a question in regards to looking at the different agencies. I'm familiar with quite a few of these, they do excellent work, and I know that the studies, last time I checked, resources, services from the state, it does show that statistically, when the breakdown of opium, of course, addiction is mainly for men, but I noticed a lot of these organizations, some of them are for families, and like McGovern Reave is for men, but is there any consideration or possibility, could we also see about some facilities are just for women as well? Are they equally distributed?
Oh, yeah, so that's a good question, or a good point there. So some of the proposals do talk about expanding services, not just for men, but for women. One of the challenges in our community is making sure that, not just that there's funding available, but there's the housing part available for women, and so that, for example, several agencies partner with some of our other housing, and they have houses available for women, and they have houses available for men. So as part of this, some of the projects are about scaling up so that there's available for both. We did not make that a requirement of the RFP, but certainly, we would have the expectation that they are able to serve both men and women. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you so much. Any other questions, Commissioner Adams?
So, and I see these, what's the metric for success? I don't see those, that's not here in this presentation.
So each proposal had to submit to us metrics that they would propose to report back to us. In terms of reporting to the state, they are still crafting the metrics that they would like for us to report on. So that has, we're a little bit ahead of the game in Cumberland County, and so they're still working on their reporting metrics that they will see. What we wrote in the RFP is that whatever reporting metrics that the NCDOJ requires of us, is what we will require the funders to report as well. And then in addition, so we're asking them to report on not just the number of served, the number of people that they serve, the number of people that they house, the number of people that successfully complete treatment, recognizing that, you know, your substance use journey is not always linear, right? You might go back, and then also, the number of people that successfully complete their program.
So, and I guess what I'm looking at, is I see these fundings, you asked me to do this, but I don't have those metrics. I don't know how many they're talking about serving, as to whether it's consistent with what I'm funding. I guess if that makes any sense.
So that, so, and we can bring that back, about how many each of the agencies propose to serve?
Basically, the last thing you were talking about in terms of the serve and the success and all of that, and it's nebulous, it's not going to be per se, because this thing moves, this needle moves. Anytime we're talking about this kind of subject, but there has to be some quantifier in terms of where these funds are going and what we're looking at.
Yeah, so, yes, and so that, for, so each of the applicants did have to submit how many people that they, and I just don't have that number off the top of my head, how many individuals that they were proposing to serve in the funding period, and that's why, so for one of them, for example, that we talked about, the last one, for Family Drug Treatment Court, we wanted to go back to because we wanted to base their funding, we wanted to see a little bit more performance and effectiveness in their program before we funded for a second year. But we can bring that information back to you about the number of people that they, each of them had put in their proposal. Yes, ma'am?
Commissioner Jones?
Commissioner Adams is absolutely correct. I just have a recommendation. I know that a lot of these agencies, they have to turn it into a legislative state, and it breaks down not just the metrics of services, but also the statistics of male, female.
Yes.
So just a suggestion, maybe that same report they get to the state, perhaps you can just get them to give you that one for us to look at.
Yes.
Just the legislative anyway.
So for example, you are correct, so for, we, North Carolina Harm Reduction, we've seen their reporting, they have to not just submit, their report is very detailed, they have to submit, you know, how many people they served, how many people were referred for treatment, how many people they referred for housing, how many people post overdoses they responded to, and similar for Carolina Treatment Center and Myoverre, since several of them do get funding from varying sources. So we can bring back to you the metrics that all of them proposed to report to us, and if there are any metrics that you all would like to see, we would be able to include in a contract process. The metrics that were required to report to the, to NCDOJ is going, again, going to vary. What they've told us thus far is, they want to know, we use a strategy called results-based accountability, meaning we ask, how much, what did we do, how much did we do, and how well did we do it? And so there'll be some demographic metrics as well as the outcome, outcome data.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation, Dr. Green.
And I have a couple more updates, and what we would like to do, you also in your packet, you, in order to move projects forward, since we came to the Commissioners in August, the NCDOJ has asked us to revise the budget resolution that we submitted to a better format and meet the template that they've provided, and so we have the updated budget resolution for you as a draft in your packet. That draft, the recommendations in this draft reflect the four recommendations that we made today for funding each of those four agencies. So let me, I'll just walk you through this. So let me, I'll just walk you through this. On that first page of the draft resolution, it talks about the first strategy that was approved in August, which was Narcan distribution. The second strategy was about Serend service programs that the commissioners approved in August. The third is the addiction treatment for incarcerated persons, that's our MAT pilot project at the detention center. And then the last four strategies, four, five, six, seven, are these four pilot projects that we just talked about this afternoon. So what we would like to do is get your feedback on this so that we can move it forward, so we can start the contracting process and start spending these dollars. We can't spend money until we have the budget resolution and have that moved forward on the February 20th, Commissioner B. Yes, ma'am?
I'm new on board, so I'm asking a lot of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
This is important for our community. Now, I do believe you were talking about the detention.
Yes.
Number three, are you all going to include also, are you going to include these services for also the youth detention, or is that being considered?
So, that one's a little more challenging. So we wanted to do the adults first, and the way that the project that we're outlining it right now is for, to do it in a couple of different phases. So to get, most counties, what they do is to start with initiation, I'm sorry, to start with maintenance, so people that are already on medication-assisted treatment. So you're coming into the detention center, you already have a treatment provider outside of the detention center, maybe you get arrested, and we want to maintain you. We want to maintain your treatment so you don't lose that progress when you're in the facility. And then the phase two part of this is to initiate people while they are in the detention center. So maybe you've never been involved in treatment, and you've never been involved in treatment at all, and now we want to get you onboarded to MAT or medication-assisted treatment. So that's the first step, and then we want to look at other opportunities for maybe the youth detention center. That's a little bit more challenging of, to do, I think, to implement, and so we started with the adults first, and then we could consider doing that for the detention, the youth detention center.
Well, I'd appreciate that, because the numbers and status do show, it's metrics, that there is an increase with teens.
Yes.
In that situation, so hopefully we move it forward, continue not to leave that out too much.
Yes.
Commissioner Fairclough.
Thank you, ma'am, Fair. I mean, I'm reading every word of this presentation and the resolution and so forth, and I'm in great agreement and everything, but the question that I have is, what, I see Narcan distribution and so forth, does anything here actually put Narcan, or the last one, whatever term we refer to, these tools in the hands of first responders?
Yes.
Can you explain how that works? Because I've gotten that question to move forward to this group.
Yes, absolutely. So the way we do Narcan distribution now is it's often purchased by the Health Department because we are able to use what we call 340B pricing. We get a discount rate because we're a public health department. And oftentimes, we serve as the distribution hub for many of our first responders, but also our community partner agencies. They'll come pick up from us, or we will drop off to them. So our first responders will let us know we're out of Narcan, and we will physically go take it to them. We also work very closely with the Community Paramedic Program. Chris Dudley works closely with us, and we coordinate. So if we have a first responder or a fire department that needs Narcan, they'll let one, it's sort of like a no wrong door approach, you let one of us know, and he will go out to an agency, or the first responders make sure they're trained, make sure they have the Sea Fort guides that go with those Narcan kits, and they get those in the hand. So this allows us to expand capacity, both for community distribution, distribution at the Health Department, agencies, and of course, our first responders.
Thank you, Dr. Green. This resolution was not in our packet, and we're just getting it. I haven't read every word of it, because I've been listening to you, and we have a couple of commissioners that are not here. So if you could get those metrics back to us some kind of way, and give us some time to review this, and then we can go from there.
Are you okay, I'm sorry, are you okay moving it forward as an item of business for the February 20th agenda, and with the caveat that the resolution would be attached and the metrics would be provided?
It's probably to that meeting.
Yes.
It's hard for me to sit at a meeting and read and listen and make a decision on over $900,000, and you asked me in five minutes to make a decision, because you put those numbers inside the resolution. I think that's unfair to this board to be able to do that. So that money, I mean, you should get, we should get that ahead.
Yes, sir. And the committee didn't meet until Thursday, and so that's the reason for the handout and not the full presentation. Yes, sir.
Commissioner Fairclough.
I did think of something else, and I forgot it, and you reminded me of it when you said that. At the bottom of page two, it refers to strategies seven and nine, and in the resolution, the strategies only go to number seven, so I didn't know what number nine was. I had one reading number eight.
Yes, so we should title things a little bit differently. So the MOA references specific strategy numbers. That's in the MOA. Those are strategy numbers. The numbering in the budget resolution is just our 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 6, 7, that's just the way we did it numerically. But, and they don't, we have to indicate, so for example, the first strategy authorized, and then it says the item, letter, and number in exhibit A. That ties back to the strategy number that we see in the MOA.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Green. Madam Manager, we move on to item 2D.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
As requested by the Board of Commissioners, our Grants Manager, Lisa Jane, will present an update on grants received, submitted, and in process.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Commissioners. It's my pleasure to be here today. I'm here to give you an update on our competitive grant updates. I am Lisa Jane, and as Ms. Renee has mentioned, I have provided you a spreadsheet with 56 of our competitive, open competitive grants, and we're going to review a few of those today. So I know many of the board members, the department heads have presented these grants to you, but because there's a few new chairpersons or commissioners, I wanted to leave those on the spreadsheet. That's why there's so many on the spreadsheet.
Thank you. Are you just going to give us the new ones?
No, ma'am, I'm going to, the spreadsheet consists of all of them, and then I'm going to give you a sampling of many of the ones on there from different departments. There's a total of 56 open grants, competitive grants.
You want to go over 56 of them?
We're not going to go over all 56.
Oh.
That was my joke, but I took it out after practice, because nobody left. So we're going to go over a few of those today, and the 56 open competitive grants cover 14 different departments. So we won't, we won't go over all that.
Okay.
Danny? All right, there we go. Okay, the mouse, I used the arrows the other day. All right. So the great overview for today is, my job was to address your board priorities, whether they be federal, state, or local. And Sally did a really good job briefing me on those. I've only been here for two months, so she brought me up to speed on those. I thought the very best way to do that was to meet with all the department heads of the county that had open competitive grants. In the process of meeting with them, I asked them all pretty much the same questions. I asked them who their POC was, because some departments are large, like Dr. Green's Health Department is very large, so she's a POC, but then she has, you know, a go-to grant person. I asked them about their open grants, because I wanted to make sure the spreadsheet, which was created before I came, had all of our open grants on it. I wanted to see if they had any pending grants that may not have been represented on that spreadsheet, potential grant opportunities for their department, helpful websites, because there's many departments I did not have a background on, like Solid Waste, so if they could provide me with websites, that would help me get up to speed on the needs of their particular departments. And reviewing the federal legislation that this board approved for their federal priorities, and see if we were addressing those within the departments, the future needs of those individual departments, and SharePoint. So Sally created a grant management SharePoint file that I'll go in a little bit more when I get down to East Civis, but it's very important that we get all of our competitive grant documents located in that one area, so we're still working on that. And with the federal legislation, you know, the HAM alerts that you all receive once a week, and then Sally and I meet with the HAM group every other week, and I do review that alert. Someone had asked if anyone reads it. I do also send that out to all the department heads, you all receive it. And the reason why the board receives it is because one of the commissioners asked for it. So of course, if one asks for it, everyone receives it. So by having me on board, if you no longer want to receive that, you know, you can just let us know. If there's a grant out there that you want to know if we're eligible for, that's where we start with all grants. If the county itself is eligible to apply for that grant, please contact me. I'll be glad to, you know, I will look into every grant that you send to see if we're eligible, and maybe if we're not eligible, if we can't apply as a county, then maybe one of our community partners can apply, and we can get that information to them. So also, I know you were probably inundated with that federal grant annual forecast the HAM group put together. That is a very, very thick document, if you print it all out, but that is great, because if we're thinking about something in the future, and we're like, well, let's see if Department of Energy released grants based on these needs, we can look in there, because often with the federal grants, they're repetitive. Every year, they might tweak the grant opportunity a little bit, but a lot of the grants are repetitive in the federal system. And that leads us to East Civis. So East Civis was kind of put on hold, the county purchased that a little while ago. When they brought me on, they asked me to receive training in that and to get all of our grants housed in East Civis. It's also a great resource for grants. We don't, I don't rely just on the HAM group for grant alerts, I get them from East Civis. The department heads themselves have their own networking, so they receive grant opportunities or notifications from other avenues, too. But for example, for East Civis Veteran Services with Eric, a grant came up for a homeless veteran stand-down, and so I brought that to his attention, and we're talking about possibly doing that event. That grant's open through '25, so we're thinking about maybe doing that event next year. He's thinking about that. The only reason we'll have training in schools here is because Commissioner Adams brought it to your attention, that the North Carolina School of Government was offering grant management for tier-one communities. I attempted to get on the class in January, but they were full, put me on a wait list. I'm on it for April, and I'm happy to say that because we're a tier-one community, the county only had to pay $40 for that instead of $485 for that. So that was one that's on there. And also, I attended a Grant Writing USA Grant Management Course up in Wake County earlier in January. Oops, sorry. Did I mess it up, Danny? Danny, did I mess this up? There we go. Okay, one more. Oops. Okay, policies and procedures. The county itself does have policies for grants, but not procedures, and so I have been asked to research and draft some procedures for the, for the needs of the grants, to make this county-wide, because every department kind of does their own thing, so to speak, but everybody comes together and pretty much, you know, brings awards letters to the council.
Yes, we're all there.
Okay, we're good now. That's good. Thanks, Danny. So it brings us to one, we want to get on one, you know, one sheet of music, so to speak. So I am drafting up procedures for grants for the county itself. The ARPA, I am on the ARPA Staff Committee and currently reviewing the nonprofits, vetting them, to see if they, you know, to vet them for the nonprofit's ability for them to apply for ARPA funds. Recently, we just were given a grant, a GRATE status update for the broadband, and so I wanted to highlight that today. The county's received on the 27th a two-party and three-party agreement, we fall under the three-party agreement, from NCDIT, and the holdup they explained was because they've been looking for exemptions for, from U.S. Treasury, they've been asking for them for uniform guidance, and they were looking for exemption for program income procurement and property standards. So NCDIT said this is the reason why there's been a delay in getting the GRATE program up and running. But they did hold office hours yesterday that I attended, that was open to all county managers and attorneys across the state, and it looks like they're moving forward. They had a few questions of the county attorneys about the wording that was in the three- and two-party agreement, so NCDIT is going to address that. And Project Safe Neighborhoods, I've had a long relationship with the Project, Eastern District U.S. Attorney's Office in Raleigh. PSN grants are available, and so I took our Justice Services Department Head and Suckin, Caroline, and Courtney up there to induce them to this group, and also there'll be future grant opportunities for them up there. Danny, right click. Up. There we go. The grant overview today will be about recent notifications and submissions, along with upcoming applications, and then you can find more detail on the grants I'm not covering today in your spreadsheet. Okay, the first grant we're going to go over is Animal Services. So this award allows the animal services to trap, neuter, and release community cats. That's what feral cats are now called, community cats, just to give you an update, along with, they'll be able to do a few other things with that award. They've already received their first payment, and they'll receive three more across the course of this year. I'm very excited to announce that the Cumberland County Sheriff's Office has received through appropriation bill that was signed into law by President Biden in December, they will receive over $2.4 billion, and this amount will completely replace all their radio systems. So they have not been notified yet, but the bodies from, the funding bodies will notify them soon. And then I left on here the body worn cameras, and these are also cameras for vehicles, because this was awarded in late, you know, '21, really implemented in '22, which was just last year, and I wanted to give you an update on that. The Sheriff's Office has nine vehicles up and running with the camera system, and this is a project they hope to complete by the end of this calendar year. Emergency Services currently has eight open competitive grants. The first one covers the town of Linden for storm debris. The second one listed is for flooding in Spring Lake. And the next two is North Carolina Department of Public Instruction for active shooter training, along with hazmat incident training for their command. Justice Services, I'm currently working with our new Justice Service Director, Courtney. We are submitting an application to Office Against Women grant for a standard project. The project was going, is going to include supervisor, supervised visitation, safe exchanges, training for court base, and then the fifth area is a database that the court systems will be able to share confidential information between. They are making 20 awards nationwide for this funding, and it pertains to domestic violence, dating violence, sexual assault victims, stalking, sex trafficking, and child sexual abuse. The next one I'd like to highlight is Library Services. They currently have 10 open competitive grants. This first one, funds will be used to purchase technology and multisensory elements, create teen spaces to continue to expand access to the community. And then the second one, the story walk, was earmarked originally for Hope Mills, but due to when they received the funding, then the Hope Mills area was under construction, and so they had to pivot, and now they're at Lake Run Park, and they plan to reapply for up to $15,000 to put a story walk into Hope Mills. Planning and expectations, press release will be coming out soon. While we've had this grant for a while, it's just now become an active. So the 400 square miles will include the towns of Eastover, Falcon, Godwin, Linden, Spring Lake, Studdman, and Wade will all be surveyed. The Public Health Department has an upcoming application to support local farmers in accepting WIC at the farmer's market. Our resubmission is being conducted by our Public Utilities. We're waiting for a notification about this grant for wastewater. Other public utility grants, details are in your spreadsheet. Social Services, currently DSS has nine competitive grants that are open. I highlighted these two since they address domestic violence, as does the Justice Services grant. Solid, yes, solid soil and water, sorry. Soil and water requested a little over $800,000 for this particular grant. They received almost $300,000 in funding, and this was enough to take care of Harrison Creek, unfortunately unable to do Flea Hill and the Wade Canal on this grant. Solid Waste was awarded in North Carolina Volkswagen settlement, and they received, they were able to purchase six diesel fleet And they received, they were able to purchase six diesel fleet trucks. The operation operate with cleaner energy. And then a recent submission of theirs was a DEQ. And they submitted their, this particular grant on November the 14th of 2022, and they have not received one back yet. And that is it. Are there any questions? I know there was a lot of material.
Thank you.
And welcome.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Are there any questions? Commissioner Jones.
Are we still using the same methods from our last meeting in reference to getting this word out to the nonprofits? I commend, there's a great list of nonprofits, but is there any plans to have maybe a town hall for a town hall meeting or anything like that? So that nonprofits that are out there can get educated, the same way we got this information, which is wonderful. But just some suggestions, ideas, maybe we can do a town hall type affair where some of these individuals given the grants can have their tables set up. You can, you know, advertise because what I'm hearing out in the community is the fact that we have, you know, these are wonderful lists of individuals on here and, and also a list. But what's happening is there's a great group of nonprofits that keep getting overlooked because no disrespect towards the Cumberland website and all that. A lot of people aren't going to that site or they're nonprofit, they've got their paperwork in order. They're just not getting the information. So I just hope that myself and the rest of the commissioners, maybe we'll be in, we'll be a little bit more open minded to try some new creative ideas. I don't know, maybe a town hall. I see a lot of nonprofit leaders in here. I know them just from working out in the community myself. Thank you all for showing up because we are, you know, we have a great team here, but that's what we're here for, is for them. So maybe we can just maybe in the future, you know, you're, you're doing a great job. I know you just got here. Maybe we can think about a, a town hall. I'm going to one myself that just a different nonprofit is hiring. I know we have ARP committee, but they've taken initiative, a group of nonprofits tomorrow. If anybody wants to come, it's from nine to 12 at the library to talk about where maybe some of those grants go. So maybe we can, you know, that's a positive idea. We can maybe do something like that and we can host.
Commissioner.
Maybe, just maybe.
Commissioner Jones, this, I think that what you're referring to are, is the ARP where nonprofits apply. What she was presenting on are grants that the county applies for the county, not for other organizations, but just for the county, but you're referring to the ARP.
Right, I understand what you're saying. We, we, we apply for those, but does this information not go out to them for them? So this information doesn't go out for them?
That is only for grants that will work, that are for the county itself, not, I mean, what you're referring to is the ARP, which is different. This information are grants that we seek out, that we find.
Right, you said we seek it out to get this information for the county to get this money, correct? To go to different places on this list?
No, no.
So this, this, these grants are for one of these companies, the chairs listed on here.
They go to county agencies. There are a number of funding sources in town, Arts Council, all of them that give out money. That's not what this is. This is a separate thing. This is county and county departments to be able to apply for these funds for, for the county. I do believe in terms of what you're talking about, and I think that what she does, and I think she started it off, if she sees any of these might be used by any of those nonprofits, she sends that out to them to be able to do. But not a town hall. We don't, we don't go look for these. I know we get, I hope y'all get them the same way. Ron Hammond though, send us every two days almost, a list of all federal grants and, and grants and grants from some state that we apply for, we hire her to apply for. Now, there are a number of, you know, the growth trust fund, the Arts Council and all of that. That doesn't come up on our purview and not up on the herd.
Okay, I understand we get these for the county. So we ourselves, though, we cannot have a town hall in reference to just giving information like you stated. This goes into our, our stuff, but some of these grants also, correct? They're able to apply for, correct? If we get information, of course, we're giving to the county. But what I'm saying is maybe I'm not explaining it correctly. I understand quite well where these go. But I'm saying, can we just take the initiative? Although this is for our county things, are we not wanting to take the initiative to still share this information? Since we get it anyway, basically is what I'm saying. We're going to do, we need to give our county information, but can we not just host? Or maybe it's not your department, maybe Economic Development. Because it goes to both is what I'm saying. Can we not just be the host of that to share?
I would tell you.
All of us, I'm just saying.
And I understand, I would tell you, and she'll take, these deadlines, by the time you have a town meeting, these deadlines are passed. And I think we might need to put them on a website or something, maybe for those that might be able to do that. But I would tell you, if you look at them, I think I sent you something that, what, had a two-week turnaround?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And, and for.
That probably gets as many as I send her every, every week.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't have to be then a town hall. I'm just thinking of ideas, perhaps, and that's a great idea, a website. I'm just saying that, saying what we get them, I understand the process works for the county. If, since we're getting the information anyway, I'm just thinking, you know, since we're getting the information anyway, it, it also not disqualifies for us and house. If they are available for it, is there any way we can let the public know? It doesn't have to be a town hall. That's all I'm saying. It isn't for us to do. We need to do it with the money for our counties, but the same way we have assets, if there's some that come across that they are, is there any way?
You can share it. You absolutely can share. You get it. You can share it wherever you want to.
I mean, I'm going to share it, but I'm saying because we holistically as a unit, make an effort to put it on a website or do something. Again, my idea doesn't have to be taking, I'm just throwing it out there. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Commissioner Fairclough.
Just want to echo a little bit of what's being said. I go back a long way on this board. I can remember we have advocated for years, if not decades, to have somebody like Ms. Jane on board. We finally, we finally got her because there were grants going right by us. Number one, either we didn't know about it or the deadline, as, as Commissioner Adams said, is upon us and we're just not getting. So we, we are just now, you came in November, Ms. Jane, is that right?
Yes, sir, the end of November.
Glad to have you, by the way.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fairclough.
Yes, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
But, but this is something that we have advocated for and asked for and finally budgeted for. And so, so we're new at this and, and I echo what you're saying. If we can, if there's any information we can share with nonprofits out there, if we come, if we run across anything that's of use, that's of value to them, that, that, that we can share, by all means, we'd love to do that. But I'm just, I'm just happy we're on, we're on step one of several now.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And, and Mr. Ty is here, and I'm sure that if there's anything that qualifies for anything under ARP, I'm sure you will put it on the website so that everybody will be current or anything that they're able to do. Okay, are there any other questions? Thank you for your presentation. Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you. Then we will move on, Madam Manager.
Next, Hank Graham, our Federal Area Metropolitan Planning Organization Executive Director, will present a request to approve a contract with Kittleson and Associates to update the 2015 Metropolitan Transportation Plan.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. The professional services agreement before you in the agenda package today is primarily to complete and conduct an update of the Federal Area Metropolitan Planning Organization's Metropolitan Transportation Plan. So I can, I can jump off into using all of these acronyms that we normally use, but I'll at least try and pronounce them once, at least once. Before you is the contractual agreement that I brought before the board back in the fall of last year. I put together a request for letters of interest to solicit professional service contracts from a number of consulting firms to complete and conduct a number of transportation planning services. This one, as I stated again, is for our MTP or Metropolitan Transportation Plan update. We are required by the federal government to update this plan every four years. And we are on a tight schedule for this update. We have a deadline of May of 2024 to have this plan completed. And, and we are still experiencing staff turnover, staff shortages, that sort of thing. That's another reason why we are entering into the professional services agreement for assistance in getting the plan completed. The total cost of the plan is $325,000. It will be paid for with transportation planning grant funds that we share with all of our local government partners in the MPO. And I know outside of your regular process and procedure, because the schedule is so short, we are asking, staff is asking that you break from protocol and approve, or at least accept this agreement and give us the permission to enter into this professional services agreement today.
Thank you, sir. Are there any discussions? We all received the information in our packets. Are there any discussions? Commissioner Adams.
I, I, I serve now as the Chair of FAMPO and it's been vetted at FAMPO in terms of this. So I would move that we approve the proposed agreement between Cumberland County and FAMPO and Kittleson and Associates in the amount not to exceed $325,000 and that approval go forth today.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been approved and properly seconded. All those in favor?
You, Davis.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we will, we take this off. Madam Manager.
Dee Taylor, our Director of Community Development, will present a selection request to move forward with a contract with Homes for Independence to the February 20th consent agenda.
Good afternoon, Ms. Taylor.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Okay. Back in 2021, Homes for Independence had hired a company to conduct a physical needs assessment of several of their units that they owned out at Martin's Landing. Oh, I'm sorry. The company, Homes for Independence, which is a nonprofit agency and a, and they're part, they're a, a housing division of under Service Source. They had hired a company to conduct a physical needs assessment back in 2021 to, which identified certain deficiencies with several of their units. These units are used to house low-income households with a physical disability. And so they apply for funding, some of our home funding, to rehab these units and bring it up to standards and in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act standards. This project does meet community development goals that are outlined in the five-year strategic plan, which includes promoting and assisting accessibility improvements to renter occupied housing by promoting reasonable accommodations for the physically disabled and by promoting and assisting of existing housing inventory in Cumberland County and promoting and advocating for reasonable accommodations that should be made to assist the physically disabled to live in accessible housing. The units are required to remain affordable a certain time, according to our contract, is no, no less than 15 years. However, in this particular program, the home, the home, the housing units will be, remain affordable for a period of 40 years. Again, community development funds are available to rehab the project. And so therefore, we are asking the board to place this item on the Board of Commissioners meeting agenda for the February 20th meeting and approve the agreement with Homes for Independence in the amount not to exceed $659,253.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Are there any questions? Commissioner Adams.
I guess, who owns Martin's Landing is my first question.
Well, Homes for Independence owns 14, 14 of the units. Homes for Independence.
That's the, that's the, under the Service Source?
Yes, yes.
Service Source. Service Source, that's what I said. So how much are they contributing to this?
For this particular rehab project, they haven't contributed. They're, they're not leveraging any costs.
So Service Source is a multi-million dollar company all over the country. And these funds that we have, these home funds are for affordable housing here. This doesn't create, and this doesn't increase any of our affordable housing for disability. And I do want to believe we need to bring it up to ADA standards, and I don't have any problem with that. But at the rate that this is going, this is $94,000 per unit.
And I apologize, eight units, not seven units.
Well, even so, I can marshal or do the math, because he's accountant. But it's still, it's going to be $80,000 per unit for a company that owns it, that gets rent from these, right?
Yes, the rent that they charge is about, is 30% of their income.
Right, 30% of the income. So they get the money, they own the property, but they don't kick any, any money to help with the rehab? That makes no sense to me. I just, I mean, I think you got to have some investment in your own property. I think this is the same thing, kind of like what we went through with the Federal Metropolitan House and when they came and asked us for all of that same money.
Right.
And I don't have a problem giving them some money and help and assist, but have we, I mean, their budget is as big or large as this county's budget for services.
And just for clarification, they initially approached us to rehab 14 units, but we decided to just do the, the eight and they can, you take care of the other units.
Are they going to take care of the other units? Or did we decide not to do?
Well, I think it's, of course, depends on their, because they are, they do have limited resources according to their operating, as far as their operating. You know, based on their operating costs.
Yes. Commissioner Jones.
Is there any way possible, I'd like to make a recommendation. As a former executive director for, it's called Employment Source, Service Source. I know that they are open to, they do an excellent job. Perhaps we can have a meeting. I don't know how they're doing business now, but when I worked there with big projects like this, because they are a million dollar company, we would have, you know, sit down just like these meetings. And we have been known to do negotiations. Perhaps they've changed things, but I know in the past, and I'm sure they're probably still operating the same way, they would have, you know, builders come negotiation based on how many units.
Right.
And so I, I stand, stand it true to say, as a former director there, and they've grown even more, I think that they would be open to that. I commend you and I thank you for, as a last meeting, as I stated, maybe we could do some, you know, already built things. So thank you for bringing that information back. And maybe my team members here will be open to perhaps more information about, meaning with their stakeholders and ours. Because they do do a lot of, you know, not negotiations for that type of money to be on the table. Sometimes it doesn't have to just be flat rated at another appropriate time. Just a recommendation.
Okay, sure. Commissioner Adams.
Well, and you can just, well, I've been, we, we leased all our property there for a dollar a year, so. And they're not paying, you know, that, so keep that in mind in terms of we doing that. I will go to the county attorney, Mr. Moorfield. I saw the contract on page five, under item J. I don't understand, it says the county hereby designate the director, Cumberland Community Development as its exclusive agent with respect to this, and they're authorized to act on behalf of, of the county. I don't understand why that doesn't come back through my county manager or my assistant county manager that's over that. That, that makes no sense to me.
And I just want to say this is still pending their legal review, pending legal review.
Well, I'm just bringing it to their attention. But if you, because I mean, there's a whole lot of stuff in there, but J just does not make sense. I think you need to look at, and I don't know whose contract it is, but there are a number of things in this contract that does not, is not for the county and to protect the county and all of that. So, but especially that J, I think there has to be some oversight through the county and, and those funds and all of that.
I don't think we're off the scene until they got on the agenda.
I'm going to try to do that, okay? Yeah.
Commissioner Fairclough.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Question, are, are these units on the tax rolls or are they somehow tax exempt?
The, the units itself, uh.
Yeah, the, the seven units at Martin's Landing or eight, however many there are, are they on our tax rolls, property tax rolls?
Yes, they are. When I reviewed the information that was on their taxing.
Do you by chance know the tax value?
I don't have that in front of me, but it was submitted. I just don't have. Uh, I don't have that in front of me, but it was submitted, I just don't have that in front of me.
But didn't ServiceSource a nonprofit?
It is.
Why would it be on the tax roll?
It's still...
It's going to house five, well, it is, but it's a 501(c)(3). I don't think it's...
I will confirm that when I look back on their application, but that information was submitted.
I'm just curious, maybe one can find that out.
Okay.
Okay. Is there a motion to move this to our November 20th consent agenda?
I'd like to make a motion, because I need, I mean, this type of deal, I need more information, no disrespect, or a special meeting, because negotiations and lawyers, just my personal opinion, I think that, you know, that they're a positive company, we do positive things, but to make a decision on this, and I do commend you for what you did bring back, it seems to me it could be a good cause, but you have to have more, just as you were stating earlier with the other situation we went through, sometimes you make this kind of money, you need to have other, you know, meetings, you can't just make a decision just like that. Me personally, I feel I need more information.
Is there, Commissioner Faircliff?
Madam Chair, this time I would make a, I would move that we place this item on the discussion agenda rather than the consent agenda.
So we'll move this, there's a motion to move this to the items for business on the 20th of February? Is there a second? A second?
I still, and, and, I don't understand, I guess my question is, did we ask them to participate in this or did we just give them the, I mean, the $659,000?
So in the application, they, they do get scored based on...
I understand, but they asked for it, I mean, I have to give them that.
Right, right.
And, and so the question is, is can I give them less and they still do the project? If they don't do the project, I mean, then they don't think the project's that, that, I love to come to you all and say, give me a hundred thousand, we have every house in Fayetteville, not even a house, but, you know, $659,000, where I have nothing invested in that and I get all the return on that. I just don't understand why we're moving that forward. I mean, it just, I think there has to be at least some conversation with them.
I said discussion, not...
No, no, what I'm saying is, if we put it on the agenda, we gonna vote on it one way or the other. I don't necessarily want to vote it down, but I'm not, in, in terms of voting it up without asking them, would you be willing to contribute something to this action? Because my thing is, the more funds I save is the more affordable housing I can do in this community, as opposed to these seven or eight units. So, I mean, but your motion is on the floor, so I don't know.
Commissioner Jones, and then I'll come to you, Madam Manager, then we'll get this motion off the floor.
Perhaps, I'm not saying this in the right order and forgive me for that, for being new, but I don't know which way to, I don't know if it's motion or what it is, but I think you're saying the same thing I'm saying, Commissioner Adams. I'm just saying, what needs to be done and what's the protocol procedure, what do we call it to be able to perhaps, is it discussion on agenda or what is it called? You all forgive me, I don't mean to sound irritated here. What is need to be provided to meet with their and stakeholders and ours to answer some of these questions? What, what is the protocol?
But you seconded his motion to go ahead and move it to the agenda.
Well, forgive me for that, because I am new and I'm still learning. I don't mean to be frustrated, so give me grace on that. So what is provided? Do I need to retract it or need it for us to meet with this company and their lead people? Thank you for bringing information back, for us to discuss it and get some of our answers done so we can make a logical decision. Do I need to retract what you said or I'm just, you know, what, what needs to be done for that to take place?
Commissioner Adams?
What, what, I'm not, I, I don't think it's for us to sit down and talk to this company. That's why I got staff. And I think we give staff direction and then staff has that conversation with this company. I mean, if any...
Well, whoever needs to, to take place, just a discussion, whoever needs to be there.
You asked me to give you some clarity, so if, if that's the thing, would be for staff to go back, have that conversation, Madam Manager, I think that's the proper way to do it. And then, and not this board and call them into this board. So I think, Marsh, if you want to change that, because I don't think they can do that between now and that meeting, but to have conversation with them and bring, and if this board wants to do, Commissioner Jones, what, what direction you want to give.
Well, it doesn't have to be, we all work here together as a team. Whoever is the person that represents us, then I feel that would be fine. I think we're spending a lot of time on this, on wordplay. Whatever needs to be done for us to move forward for the collective, for the community, but we all work together as a team. It doesn't have to be me.
I can't hear as it is, okay?
Yeah.
I hear most of what you're saying. I cannot hear from the back of Commissioner Jones's head.
Well, I'm speaking into the mic, so I'm sorry that you can't hear.
What?
I'm speaking, I don't, I don't want to speak too loud. I mean, we all work as a team. I guess I'm just, when I say, forgive me, like I said, I'm new, when I say we as Commissioners, we trust our team, we all work together, whoever it is, that's why I said whoever it is is supposed to talk to them and we talk to, we're here as a team.
Commissioner Adams?
Whatever needs to do that.
What, what I was suggesting, Commissioner Jones, before you cut me off, is that you gotta give direction to the staff of what it is you desire to know to be able to do that and then staff carries that out. And so mine would be that whether they would have some input, I mean, some, some dollar amount that they're willing to invest along with and, and cut hours down, that would be one of the things that, that I would...
Oh, I thought cut was the direction I was given when I said meet with them and see if we can negotiate. The words I used were negotiation. I said perhaps, because I did state I used to be a former Director and they've been known, I said in the past, don't want to speak for them now, to negotiate. And then I also said perhaps a special meeting, more appropriate time to get all those details. I do believe we're saying the same thing, different word, but verbiage in my opinion.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Attorney Moorfield, did you have something to say? I saw you with your...
There are several issues with this. I mean, I noticed it's signed as Secretary and Chair by the same person and there's some things like that that we, we, we just need to, I don't think we will have this in a, in a place that you could, should consider it again on the 20th and I'd ask that you just, just, just hold this until March.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Faircliff?
At this time, I'd like to withdraw my motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Adams?
So my motion is just to let staff and any Commissioner that has any request in terms of that, to get that to staff and staff sit down with legal and with Homes or certain services and have those discussions.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll make sure, thank you, Dee. We'll move on to number C. Let's make sure that we are acknowledged so that we can hear everybody. Council, Commissioner, council has a hard time hearing and when we're talking over each other, it makes it even more difficult for even those of us who don't have a challenge hearing to understand what's going on. Madam Manager, we'll move on to item number...
Three C.
C, please.
Our Assistant County Manager for Strategic Management and Governmental Affairs, Sally Shutt, will present a proposed North Carolina legislative agenda for approval. The agenda is based on Commissioner feedback and previously identified legislative priorities as well as requests from county departments. The agenda will be shared later this month when we meet with our legislative delegation and I believe Sally's going to be able to announce the date. Sally joins us remotely.
Good morning.
Good afternoon.
Hi. Good, did you hear me and see the presentation on the screen?
We can't hear.
I was a busy, so I have, what do you call it, the agenda for state delegation and we have received confirmation that they will begin to be scheduled Monday, February 20th at 8:00 for breakfast meeting. So different packets you have until agenda, so I'm going to briefly read this. So first, we go for making this to establish a deadline for the extension of two months following the issue of Washington Experiary Prosperation Project, wrapping that deadline to June 40th, but 2025. So when county has received an obligation to establish a passport or two year warranty and the deadline was set for June 40th, 2023, we are advocating it there. In the area of implementation, to increase the funding for public schools that have capital needs, we need to build top priority for North Carolina Association of County Schools, requesting the design for the need for the public school capital fund to allow more access to county and bathroom, which we brought. For environmental areas, the legislation for clean water ponds and the regulations of companies that mainly capture heat pot chemicals, increase the shortage of funding for the town receiving for higher disposal taxes and increase the funding the counties receive for managing electronics recyclers. We're also here at General Government, we're asking the delegation to advocate for the proposed interstate highway I-65, that's proposed between Ridge Road and I-100 to not bypass Cumberland County, in the asset being found, be adjusted to include Cumberland County and to comply economic development on the street. Additionally, legislation under the efforts to expand digital infrastructure and raw mannequin passing to the unserved and underserved areas in residence, using the giant engine of Great Grand, specifically that he is in the base, we are requesting with the Treasury changes to the, the uniform guidance. In the area of health and human services, so we know that our government services office has seven positions there, they're coming funded in the string with Disney Office in North Carolina and has traditionally been one of the top counties to work out of that that they assist residents with. So we are supporting and asking the delegation to support legislation to improve the number of state-funded county veterans for the self-service to at least one per county, so we will, and in our county, this again is another goal of the North Carolina Association of County Schools. Wrapping to you, funding in the area of residential health, to residential health, behavioral health services and facilities, including dedicated resources for infection, crisis, venom, and substance use disorders, for example, for mental health, vice and recovery centers, in the area of specialty force, for example, mental health force, and for individuals with mental health issues or as a addiction center, community care medical programs, and increase funding for stimulus funding for the LND, and the support for us and the Ohio Health. And support funding for mental health professionals in 911, our 911 call center, and special work professionals in our public library system. The next goal in health and human services is to seek additional funding for Cumberland County's efforts to rent homes, including construction of a shelter and service provision as well as the need for affordable housing for our residents. To support expansion of Medicaid and as well the additional funding and operating facility, operational flexibility for families to expand the county workforce and enhance the area infrastructure. We know that there will be a burden placed on our Department of Social Services and we need at least a six-month startup window prior to the Medicaid expansion to allow our Department of Social Services to prepare for that expansion. In the area of public health, the court proposed changes to the statute which outlines the educational requirements for registered and minor mental health specialists in North Carolina. We were seeking a proposal to be less restrictive than the current educational effects requirement. This change would immediately ban the pool of advocates in the environment of health physicians, but help our health departments in deal with backlogs in, in that area. Also under public health funding, we're seeking additional funding and to preserve the women and children's health services, block grant funding, and to address the funding of the individual who will ever be impacted by the universal and early disease. And then also in the number of human services, we're seeking increased state support and funding for adult services and reinforcement for salaries. The currently in contribution to provide services for adults, such as adult services, guardianship, and adult daycare, is by Maryland County funding and we now can take those increases to be on an aging population. In the area of foster years, we're funding for the strategies that are included in the Child Welfare and Human Wellness together, to like coordinate action plans through generally within the Department of Public Health Services. And then also to increase funding strategies, stabilize and the childcare industry, like other counties across the state, we are focusing on childcare staffing shortage. And then in the final area of public safety, three main goals. We are seeking the authority to allow a more established fund to include the purchase of equipment and supplies to first responders to treat individuals who are suffering from what I said, opioids and other substances, specifically this would include state influence from sort of the purchase of narcotics as well as disposing tech or insubordinate other life-threatening drugs. Our fire departments tend to talk to us about the need to establish a four-call system to follow to your fire department, departments, especially those located near the interstate and highways, are increasing calls. And state troopers respond to calls by the highway fire truck left up to local fire departments. So our rural, local, volunteer fire departments are seeing increasing calls, especially along the construction sufferings. So this request would be to have a local tax payers not having to be able to call for those calls. And then finally, we're looking to create a new funding for backup mortgage generators at our mortgage rate and that's what we're trying to do. So the draft call is now seeking feedback from the board so that we can, in your consideration, to carry on this, saying that we can provide it in the delegation prior to some meetings on February 20th.
Thank you so much, Sally, for your presentation. Commissioner Adams?
And it's great, I think that's the book we put it in, I think this is fine, but just as Representative Soca said, tell me what you want. This doesn't tell them, give me this amount of money, that amount of money, I need this for that. That's why, the last one, we got only a million dollars for a homeless shelter and I don't even think we asked for the million dollars, they just gave it to us. So the problem we have here, because I've got a call from one of the representatives and one of the senators who were trying to put stuff in the governor's budget and they, I think our county manager, she's working hard to get those, we've got to come up with some dollar amounts that we want to put with these things and not just give them a book up there and say, support this. That doesn't help Cumberland County. So we got all of these and maybe each one of us and, and with staff, put some dollar amounts to this. It's not enough, I think, and I think Representative Soca, you remember, he, he used to sit in the meeting all the time, right? And ask us, what's your dollar amount? What's your ask? And if you don't give them an ask, they can't, they're not going to do the hard work and the budget. I've talked to them, they want to know what we want. And so I think we've got to do a little bit better job in terms of figuring out whatever this is and say, we want 500,000 for this, we want 600,000 for this, we want a million for this, and we go for it that way. I don't think we just throw... I don't think we just throw all of this at them and say, this is what we're looking for. It's kind of difficult, because we're behind the eight ball, I think we need to do this a little bit in advance, but I know that Senator Applewhite called me the other day, she said, just give me something, I can put it as a placeholder for now, because we can change the amounts or do some things, but we've got to actually ask for some amounts.
Commissioner Council?
I agree, and it's a very, it's not a comprehensive list. It is a list of things that we've talked about over the years, but I don't think that we need to stray from public water for our schools. And that needs to be on everything we ask for. Public water, because the governor has a budget and funds for he can do things, so I wish we could prioritize and use that, okay? Public water, because when they're running the water lines to these schools, at least we could attach to people who are close to them, or on the lines. I want to ask for that. Anybody oppose me? Can we be unanimous on that one? Public water.
I'm sure we can. Commissioner Faircloth?
Madam Chair, thank you. Sally, this is like drinking from a fire hose. I've never tried that, but I've heard it's kind of rough. This is more stuff than I can even comprehend. And as already been alluded to, it really needs to be very succinct, it needs to be a small list of things that we, it's not a want list, it's a need list, a very critical need list, with specific dollar amounts, and I'm not sure if we've got time between now and having breakfast with the legislative delegation, that we can even narrow it down. But I know, I sat on a committee at state level, and chaired a committee at state level, and we took a list like this and narrowed it down to about a half a dozen things. And then, I sat on the big committee, that took all eight of the committees, and narrowed it down, like a hundred and sixteen things, down to about three. So, somehow, I know a lot of work's been done here prior to my even sitting here, but we better figure out pretty quick what our top four or five things are, before we have breakfast with those guys.
Commissioner Jones?
I just wanted to agree with all of my team members, especially Commissioner Faircloth. I know myself, I'm doing a lot of work with former Senator Kirk DeViere, in a different component, and serving on a lot of governors committees. This list right here, not to be negative, I just agree, he said pretty much what I was gonna say, we're really gonna have to, for me working with former legislators, we're gonna have to limit this. And also, since we did have some goals, as Councilwoman Council said here, we had some goals, and I think that should be in alignment, like you said, with the water. It just needs to be consistent and condensed a lot. From my experience when working with former Senator Kirk DeViere and other state legislators, I think that we're all saying the same thing.
Commissioner Council?
I'm not trying to beat on you, Sally, because you ask us every year what we want. Certain things on this list come back every single year. I don't think we're gonna get too much help for that crazy road out there that we're trying to fix. I ninety-five with all the rigs, with the fire hoses, the things that we need for that. I don't know if that goes to the governor or not. Can you, will you have time to help us narrow this down to about four bullets, to include the water?
I've got, I've heard the public water and the schools.
Are you referring to Gray Street Water and Gray Street?
After planning the session on January, just mental health and school.
Gray Street, okay. Commissioner Adams?
I guess this can go forward, as we do that, but you have your priorities, but you still have to ask for some money, or some dollar amounts. It's not enough to say these are the four priorities. I think what she's put forth here, some things we want them to support in the General Assembly, and that's fine. And then we do the priorities like Commissioner Council knows, but these are priorities with some dollar amounts on it.
Do you want to discuss what you want us to emphasize? So what I'm hearing is, let's give the entire list to the delegation, but when we actually present to them, that we have a more focused list of our top priorities with dollar amounts included. Is that right?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. I'm sorry.
So, what I'm hearing is that we give the list as compiled to the legislative delegation, but when we meet with them, presentation will be our top items, our priorities, and we will have dollar amounts associated with those things that we can.
That's right, yes, that's it.
So, do you want us to propose what the priorities would be? We've heard water, and we've heard schools. Do you want to have a discussion about what the additional priority should be, or do you want us to make a proposal?
I think that we already sat down and talked about a list of priorities, if I'm not mistaken. Sally, have we all sat down and had a conversation with a list of priorities? I know.
Yeah, I had your range, said you've got the public class, schools and mental health, and public water.
Okay. For the schools, maybe the governor can pick it up.
Well, I do know that Commissioner Keith and Commissioner Boons did both tell me that they had some items that they wanted to consider priority, so I don't want to, they're not here right now, and I don't want to leave all of that out, but I'm sure we could get that information from them. Commissioner Adams?
I would ask staff, from the Health and Human Services part, is on the child crisis, some money for child crisis, and finish out our child crisis center. That's just a, it's a need for DSS, it's a need for the court system. We don't want to be like Wake County, have kids sleeping in our DSS building.
Right.
Have kids sleeping in the DSS building, that's what they're doing in Wake County.
Okay, do you have that, Sally? Madam Manager, are you, okay. Sally, are you clear? You okay?
I would say we would try to list the priorities we presented, but to prioritize and present only on their top priorities, and in the meantime, together, some dollar amounts to attach with the priorities.
Yes, perfect. Okay, perfect. Okay, we're clear. Commissioner Jones?
If possible, could we also add affordable housing, if there's any dollars, or just that we know that that's something we've been talking about at the planning meeting too, for one of our priorities?
Yes, we have there.
I think that he's not here, but I did receive, we all did, I think that that was something that Commissioner Keith, he's not here, I won't speak for him, I know that he said a lot of things about affordable housing, so you might want to just consider that.
Okay, thank you so much, Sally.
Thank you.
Madam Manager, for D, three D, that is Commissioners Keith, and I would, there were some questions about that, so we, you already pulled it?
Yeah, I already.
No, we were moving it to an item of business, so if I can get a motion to move that to an item of business on February the twentieth, and that is three D, if I can get a motion for that, and I get a second, please. It has been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Yes.
Thank you. We will move down to item three F.
This is relocation of the McCauley Container Site to Assembly Court. Solid Waste has leased the McCauley Convenience Site for many years, and would like to relocate to a site owned by the county. The board approved the relocation on November eighteenth of 2019, and since that time, the proposed site has determined not to be, we've determined that it's not feasible to build upon it due to possible flooding and wetlands. Economic Development suggested an alternative property on Assembly Court inside the industrial center, because, excuse me, because of its overlap with economic development, General Manager for Environmental Services Amanda Bader is requesting the site location be moved forward to the February twentieth consent agenda, and we have talked with Economic Development, and there are no active projects that are considering this site.
So moved, Madam Chair.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Yes. Okay, at this time, we are on our other items, for all of our monthly reports, which we have previously received in our packets. Are there any questions about any monthly reports? If I can get.
Madam Chair, move to a closed session for pursuant to NCGS one forty-three, three eighteen eleven, A one, and for pursuant to NCGS one forty-three, three eighteen eleven, A four. Is that the two that I needed?
Close, I don't have the.
Attorney Klein.
Economic Development and Attorney Klein.
Right, confidential information was the first one, and economic development was the other one that I did.
If I can get a second. It's been motioned properly second to go into closed session. All those in favor?
Yes.
If I can get a motion to go back.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly second, all those in favor? We need a adjourn.